Doug Young, if you would lead us in the pledge, please.
If you could with me, if you desire, please. Heavenly Father, we're all gathering here today through and by your wisdom, your work, your health, your provisions for us. Praise you for the beautiful day, praise you for the rain that our county has just enjoyed and all the provisions you provide for us. Father, we thank you for the opportunity and freedom of having meetings like this for our county and communities. Pray blessings on our decisions and may they be within your will and your way. Guide our thoughts and our deeds. You're so the name that I come in.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Okay. Mr. Clayton, can you hear us?
Yes, right. I sure can.
Yes, sir. All right.
Okay. Good to go.
All right. Do we need to make any adjustments on the agenda? Add or delete?
Move for approval.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Anybody sign up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything in the consent agenda anybody wants to pull out and talk about?
Move for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Item number two, Ms. Sally Vaughn and Lori Oakley, if y'all would come forward, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are here to present to you today the activities, both past and future, of the Complete Count Committee that has been formed in this county to make sure that we get an accurate count for the 2020 census. I've got a brief presentation and then there will be a partnership resolution, which you can choose to support or not, and also a request for some undesignated contingency funds to be released to the governing body. So again, we're here just to talk a little bit about the census next year. I was told this had to be turned on. There we go. Do I have to aim it at anything?
No.
Are we sure? Did I go too far? Okay. All right. So just some brief facts about the census. The goal here is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. And we want to count those people where they are in place on April the first, 2020. It new in 2020 is the ability to respond to your census documentation online. You can also respond by mail or phone. And the census expects that about 95% of our population will receive their invitations by the mail. Less than 5% will receive invitations when someone drops it off at their house, and less than 1% will be counted by a census taker. And just for some perspective, in 2010, the response rate for Person County was about 82%. So 82% of our population responded. Some more facts, the census is confidential. Any identifying information about individuals will not be released for 72 years. So to give you some perspective, in 2022, the 1950 census information will be released. Another fact is that federal funding for the census has remained flat from 2010 levels, even though the population of the United States has increased. And again, we will have the opportunity to respond online in 2020, which I think brings some unique challenges to Person County. So some examples of how we use census data. You see this chart here, that's kind of a population breakdown in Person County. The little pie chart is what percentage of this county is male versus female, and then another map showing that in Person County, 72% of our housing units are owner occupied. So anytime you hear statistics like that, they're coming from the census. So why is a count important? Number one, it's required by the Constitution. It also determines congressional representation, and North Carolina may gain an additional seat in both the House and the Congress based off of the results of the census. So we want to do our part to make sure that North Carolina is represented fairly. And these results are also used to guide economic development, policymaking, et cetera. $1,623 per person per year is allocated in the state of North Carolina by the federal government. So as you can see, an undercount by a few people has a big impact. So for example, if we miss 10 people, that's $162,000 that we'll lose in a 10-year period. So the census has given us information about people who are typically hard to count. Those include young children under the age of five, Hispanic and Latino individuals, Native Americans, Black or African Americans, renters, and migrants. And you can see on the slide there, the breakdown in this county. So for example, 5.4% of this county is estimated to be young children, 5% and under. And so we need to make a special effort to reach those individuals or the parents of those individuals to make sure they get counted. So what have we done to prepare for the 2020 census? Preparation began a long time ago. The GIS department has completed three projects: annexation surveys, address updates, and statistical area program. That's just part of what we do as a department. Zach and I work diligently with the Census almost every year to make sure everything is updated at the federal level. In this most recent round, we updated or added 1,200 addresses to Person County that were omitted from the 2010 census. We have also formed a complete count committee, and that committee consists of myself and Lori, Zach in the GIS department, Kayla in the planning department, and Laura from finance and county management. So what is a complete count committee? This map here depicts across the state the jurisdictions that have formed complete count committees. It's basically a committee that the census, both at the federal and state level, recommends that everyone form in order to educate and promote census awareness through targeted efforts, especially in those hard-to-count communities. And we also plan to connect people to the tools that they'll need to complete those forms, whether it be a phone, or a computer, or some help maybe reading something. So up to this point, we have sent out almost 18,000 inserts in the tax bill this year, about 4,800 inserts in the City of Roxborough September Water Bill that they paid for. The City of Roxborough paid for that. We also attended the Personality Festival with the U.S. Census. That lovely photo was taken there. The Census also attended the Library Senior Day and has popped up at the Senior Center multiple times. And then the Complete Count Committee has developed a slogan that we're going to use on all of our materials from this point forward. You count in person. We have probably the best county to make slogans with, so we definitely use that. So you'll be seeing that on all of our social media posts coming forward. So what we would like to do in the future, I guess, number one, we are having a community meeting on November the 19th, and that's to engage not only county staff, county and city staff, but also community leaders in the awareness that the census is coming, and kind of build like a phone tree, where you contact those high-level leaders and they push information down to their people. We intentionally are going to make sure we speak with people in education of young children, going to make sure we get to our minority populations as well. We'll also have a census display at the library for the month of December. Now, everything on this slide after that is contingent upon the approval of the undesignated contingency funds. We plan an additional water bill advertisement with the City of Roxborough's water bills. We plan newspaper, radio, and Channel 10 articles and advertisements, social media boosts. We would like to advertise on the Pats vans. We also would like to get several dozen yard signs, banners, handouts, that type of thing to put up at soccer games, you know, in front of the Kirby, you know, around the county at parks and whatnot. And we also plan to have events at the library, the senior center in our parks, et cetera. So just some basic census highlights. You can already see we've completed the three programs the GIS department does, the Basaluka and the PSAP programs. Some of you may have gotten a knock on the door back in August and September for someone that was checking your address onsite. Right now, they're hiring census takers. So if anyone would like a census job, you can go to their website or give me a call and I'll direct them. And then in about mid-March, those invitations are going to come through the mail. And so the majority of our education campaign is going to happen after the holidays up through the spring. Again, census day is April the first, 2020, and then starting in April, census takers will be onsite to visit people first in group housing and then the homes of those people that did not respond voluntarily. And then hopefully by April of 2021, we'll have a draft of the census data that they are collecting. So today, I'm asking for a resolution of support for the Complete Count Committee partnership and a transfer of $12,000 from undesignated contingency funds to the governing body for census-related costs. Are there any questions?
Any question?
I have a question. I have a comment.
All right.
Appreciate what you're doing here. And I hope the people of Person County realize how important this is. As you've mentioned, the financial impact for our community over the next 15 years can be huge. So we do want everyone counted, and those hard-to-count categories, I think, are ones that we really need to focus on, too. Again, I think the biggest impact would be in healthcare for our county long-term, so I think it's extremely important that we reach those hard-to-count and go above that percentage that we did last time around. I appreciate what you're doing here, Alex.
Move for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, ladies. Item number three, Heidi, if you would.
Actually, I think the county attorney is going to handle this one.
Okay.
Bringing you up to date on the Woodsdale Volunteer Fire Department and a resolution for your consideration.
As the board recalls, the state issued a notice of violation to the Woodsdale Volunteer Fire Department with a statement that the department would be decertified as of October 8th. That would make it ineligible for state funds and would make the fire insurance classification be reduced. October 8th is important because if nothing were done by October 8th, the order would become effective. If the order is appealed by October 8th, then it would put everything in suspicion until such time as the appeal was finally determined. That appeal has occurred, in fact, it has occurred twice. It was appealed in the first instance before October 8th by what I will call the old board. And just to make sure that the appeal occurred, what I will call the new board appealed as well. So the state has pending an appeal, which has the effect of holding in suspension the action that they were proposed to take. So things are now held in abeyance until final disposition. On October 3, a resident of the community, Mr. Woody Jacobs, coordinated a properly noticed community meeting of the members of the Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated. You should note that they operate as a nonprofit corporation, so the laws relating to nonprofit corporations apply here. They have a corporate charter and bylaws that specify the procedures necessary to change things. Mr. Jacobs abided, in my opinion, by all the rules of that corporate charter and bylaws in calling, facilitating the call of a community meeting. At that community meeting, more than 80 members of the community were in attendance. Two significant actions were taken. Three, really. Mr. Jacobs was designated by the group as a temporary presiding officer at that meeting. The two other actions taken was, number one, to dismiss the current board of directors and all officers of the current board of directors. That motion, I understand, passed unanimously. Secondly, they elected a slate of new board members and officers, which I understand also was approved unanimously. Where are we now, then, with regard to the Woodsdale Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated? In my opinion, the old board now has no further authority. The new board now has full authority to operate the corporation. It would be much like a new governor gets elected, old governor has no further authority. So the new board, in my opinion, now has full authority to operate. You should also note, backing up just a moment, that the old board engaged a Raleigh law firm to file that appeal that I indicated they made. I talked to the law firm principal, one of the partners in that law firm, and she informed me that they represented the corporation only for the purpose of filing the appeal. So they have been engaged by the old board at a time the old board was still in place to represent the corporation. That's still to be resolved, how that works out, but you ought to know that a law firm was engaged to file the formal appeal. So now you have before you a resolution which would set forth the So now, you have before you a resolution which would set forth the facts as I have generally laid out for you, and ask you to approve and recognize the new board as the official governing board for the Woodsdale Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated. Secondly, it asks you to authorize the staff and the attorney to provide assistance to the new board during the transition to the new operation in an attempt to resolve the issues around that volunteer fire department. And finally, authorize a contract amendment with the volunteer fire department so that some funding, county funding, could be dispersed per individual invoice for payment as needed so long as that invoice and payment request is coordinated through the County Emergency Services Director and so long as the board is making progress on alleviating the current contract problems and moving forward to having the service available in the community. I think the EMS Director has worked with a ultimate solution and can answer any questions about what might happen, but this resolution asks you again, recognize new board, authorize county staff and attorney to assist in processing this, and a contract amendment which would authorize some funding per individual request so long as that funding is coordinated with the EMS Director. For example, I think the new board would hopefully have authority to secure whatever funds are in the account. I don't think they know what is in the account now, but if there is a requirement, for example, for a payment on a piece of equipment, we understand that there is probably a lien and a mortgage on some fire equipment. If they don't have sufficient funds so that that is not paid, cannot be paid, then this would be an example of where they might request some funds from the county to make sure that they can keep that piece of equipment ready for operation. I will be glad to answer any questions. The EMS Director is here, the county manager, and anyone else.
On your resolution, seven where it's down, where it talks about the community meeting, at the end of that, should it say dismiss the existing board and elect 12 new board members per their bylaws or per bylaws?
Because it was...
Just to be clear, did they follow the existing bylaws to do so?
Not a bad amendment. Tell me again, I'll write that in.
Well, I'll let you lower it up, but I'm just going to say, did they follow the proper bylaws?
Right.
Per existing bylaws.
All right, we would say, where it is on October 6th, 6, 2019...
Yeah, the one above that.
Above that, at a community member, at a community meeting on October 3rd, the community members voted unanimously to dismiss the existing board and elect 12 new board members pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the organization. Any other questions, Mr. Chairman of the Board of Members?
The law firm that was engaged by the old board, is the new board, are they going to continue to use that law firm for the appeal?
That I don't know. I do not represent either new or old board. That is a question that the new board should take up. They now are the governing board of the corporation. If the law firm represents a corporation, they would take direction from the new board, so that's a question the new board will have to determine. There has been, I understand, some discussion that the new board might consider at least paying for the services so far, but that's a discussion that new board needs to have with that attorney.
Would that go ball on to category three with the county assisting with the fire services as a, as a system paying for the legal fees?
It could, I think, Mr. Perrier, but doesn't have to. The corporation has funds of its own. We believe, they believe they have funds. I suspect the new board and the county perhaps may want it all to get, to make sure things are in place, but we understand funds are there, some funds, so those funds can be used for whatever proper purpose the corporation wants to use them, and it probably would be proper to pay the attorneys. If there are not sufficient funds, that would be an issue, that they would request funds then from the county through the EMS Director to pay obligations, which would might include the long term.
But that's the new board.
New board. Quite honestly, not quite honestly, clearly to me legally, the old board now has no authority to do anything the new board is totally in charge of.
Yeah, I hear that, Mr. President.
I think it's on the new board.
All right. Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is John Link, and I was elected president of the new Woodsdale Fire District Citizens Committee because I don't, I mean, I don't know that we could actually consider ourselves being a board as yet because we have not been recognized by the county. And I have here a notarized notice to the Person County Commissioners from John Link, President Citizens Committee, and it's in reference to the proposed Board of Directors, and it's dated October 21st, 2019. And this was all written by me yesterday morning at 4:30 in the morning. And it says that I, John Link, as duly elected president of the Woodsdale Fire District Citizens Committee, do at this time respectfully decline the Person County Commissioners' offer nomination recommendation motion, however you all are going to do it, to become the Woodsdale Fire Department Board of Directors. And it's signed by me, John Link, President, and the other notarized area. And I'll provide a copy of this for documentation. And if you want to hear the reasons for that, I mean, I'd be glad to provide it, but we, I don't know if the citizens have enough information to actually... We need to at least have time to go back and meet with our current Citizens Committee to discuss this further. So if you all want to delay the process, that'll be fine. If you choose to accept this, decline it, that's fine, but this is where we stand right now.
So you are not ready to take over the old board, is that right?
That's correct.
All right. Now, myself, my main concern is that we maintain a 9S fire rating. And I think it's in the best interest of the citizens, whether it's your committee or anybody else that lives down there, for us to maintain that. And, but, you understand the problem as well as anybody. And we, as a board, could certainly use some guidance as to how we need to proceed. We can do it what the lawyer said, or, you know, right now, it doesn't look like we've got anybody to work with. So how do we protect the citizens in the meantime?
I think you were in attendance that night, and I don't know if I made a statement that night, but I had been to the fire commissioner's office and some other places. And it's my understanding that the appeal process is already going on, okay? So as far as the 9S rating, I mean, you know, it is in place, I mean, you know. And there will be no action taken until that is resolved.
And that appeal could happen as, the judgment on that appeal could happen as early as two weeks or two months. We don't know exactly what their timeline is, but my main concern is that we're going to go down this road. It appears that we're going to wind up in front of a judge at some point in time, and that really doesn't have to happen if we can all get around a table and make things work out. I don't care who runs the place, I just want the place to be a viable operation.
Exactly. Okay. Also, I expressed that I had been in continuous communication with the members of the old board. I mean, you know, I didn't cut off any nice communication with anybody, and I'm thankful that we were able to work together. On Saturday morning, five members of the President Committee met with members of the old board, and we came to a mutual agreement that we would work together to try to continue, to see what we could do as a group, because it is about the community, it's not about me, you, or whoever else is here. It's about the community, and this community is not just Bethel Hill, Woodsdale, or wherever. I mean, you know, in my travels over to Raleigh, I just happened to meet somebody over there that had family that was in this area. The attorney that attended the meeting that we had at the Ruin Club, she expressed that the reason that she volunteered to come that night was because she had ties to this community. So I mean, you know, and, you know, we're all, I know we're all concerned about the 9S rating, I mean, you know, that's true, but human life is what's most important. And you cannot provide service from 13 miles away that you can provide if you have a functioning facility in that vicinity. Also, whoever is serving in that vicinity is going to have more knowledge of where the citizens in that community live. I'll tell you what happened, and this was maybe prior to me, well, no, after, I had kind of gotten involved in this. Let me tell you, two scenarios. I walked out to my mailbox one morning, and I know that the mail doesn't run until like, you know, 11 o'clock during the day, but that particular morning, I walked out to my mailbox or took the trash to the highway, and when I looked down the hill to my left, I have two neighbors down there. They're both disabled, okay? I looked across the road to the lady over there who I mow her yard every time I mow mine, she's disabled. Up on the hill is one of my best friends from childhood. I mean, all of these are my friends, but up on the hill is one of my, he's disabled, okay? And my wife has a disability, and that never had occurred to me before, I mean, you know. And so my concern is that we'd be able to provide service there to the citizens as swiftly as possible, I mean, you know. And so...
Do you think that's achievable?
I do. What do you think?
I don't know the community well enough to know. I mean, just my take on the meeting, you know, it looked like it was this side against this side. Now, what you said is you've come together and made some type of concession that y'all are going to try to work it out. Now, this board up here is, will have severe problem, I would think, in issuing funds to something that they don't have any idea that's going to work. We're not going to throw money out the window.
Totally.
If we can help it.
Totally agree.
All right, so y'all are going to have to prove to us that you can make it work.
Okay.
Otherwise, neither group is actually in control.
Exactly.
So, you know...
When you all met with the old members, did you have an idea how much money you do have?
That was not one of the questions, and the reason for it is because this was a meeting to discuss. There were four other members from the current committee present, and we were well-represented, I mean, you know, not just... And so... I thought maybe some of them would be present this morning, but I don't see any of them. Well, yeah, yeah, but that's, yeah. Excuse me. He is from the old board, that's Ronnie Womack, and so, I mean, I hope that that represents the fact that we have been able, I mean, you know, to communicate, I mean, you know. And so, and we had members from the fire department, well, there, and so, I guess all that we are asking, I mean, you know, is the Woodsdale Fire District Committee has a meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening at 6:30 p.m. This was already scheduled, okay? At least let the five members and anybody else and the, that wants to, at least allow us time to go back and talk to committee.
All right, now, did y'all have an official board meeting, or did y'all just have a meeting of the minds?
You mean, at the...
Yesterday.
The joint meeting?
The joint meeting? There was no official board meeting, no, and that's why I don't feel like we can go through with this at this time, I mean, you know, without going back and meeting with the committee.
Okay, now...
Are the former board members considered members of the community per the bylaws given to their own land or live in the district?
In reference to that question, I mean, I don't actually, if you're going to call them board members...
Well, they call themselves board members. I'm talking about the old board.
Okay.
Now, per the Woodsdale bylaws, which they operate as the old board, are they considered members of that district per the bylaws that says you have to own land or be a resident? Would those be either? Are those former board members, and Mr. Womack's here, he can speak to it if he'd like to, but are any of them considered members per their own bylaws? Do they own land or live in the district?
Would you like to speak to it?
Do you live there?
I think that probably he was a little bit, and, but, and he changed the bylaws.
I, I, I don't, I don't have a ton to do with that, I mean, I, that's.
We can't contract.
So, so what you're presenting, Mr. Link, is this, is this from the board that was established on October third or this is just from the five members they met yesterday with the old board?
I heard four members.
Four members?
Five members.
Five of the new?
Including myself, yeah, yeah, uh-huh, yeah, five. So, uh.
Five of the old board or the new board?
Five of the.
They didn't have five of the old board together.
Uh. There were five, uh, the new. Committee that was established on October, that was, uh, uh, selected on October the third.
Since we together, we did meet Saturday and we came to, as, as Mr. Link was saying, uh, I don't know what, yet he's saying old board, new board, we're not against each other, we are, what was achieved by them was what we have been trying to accomplish with, ever since I've been there to get the community to come out and be a part of the Wooddale Fire Department. And so that is, has been achieved and we are ready to turn this thing over to them without having a whole lot of, uh, uh, com, uh, legalities or a whole lot of he says, she says. We're working together with them so that they can move transition into this thing. So we're not, uh, we're not, uh, opposing what's going on, but it's, uh, we just wanna do it the right way. There's no need to reinvent the wheel, when you say old board and new board, the, the same, the same thing that's in place can continue to take place. All we need to do is come to the meetings and so they can be put in, and so they can get some, some funding can be done, 'cause at this point, you asked, is there, is any funding? There is little or no funding because you all haven't given us any money and you know how it takes funds to operate in it is, so no. But we are willing, we're working together so we won't have to reinvent, reinvent the wheel.
Mr. Attorney.
We have, uh.
Yes.
Adam Attorney, it, with the, uh, commission's same place that he went and they're ready to, to resolve this thing with nine S status as soon as, as, as we get together, so yes, that's what we're willing to do, but, and you know, there is no funding because you all haven't given any funding.
Mr. Per the contract?
For fiscal year twenty.
Yeah.
It was a disbursement meeting in May, I deleted disbursement.
Mr. Period?
I wanna get, I thought we were going down a clear path now, um, it's.
I am.
All fuzzy again. Is Mr. Link the, uh, the authorized president of the corporation?
Uh, I, I was not at the meeting, I think the, uh, EMS director was there, uh, the, Mr. Jacobs who coordinated the community building is in the audience. My understanding was that in fact, uh, Mr. Link and eleven others were elected as board members at that community meeting. Subsequent there too, there was a meeting of the board of directors and at that board of directors meeting, they elected their own officers and Mr. Link was elected the president as well as the list we now have, Mr. Dunn as vice president, Mr. Paul Bailey as treasurer and Miss Vickers as secretary. Uh, so, I'm, apparently they were elected, duly elected at that meeting as board members and at a subsequent board meeting, officers including Mr. Link was elected. Uh, I, I do not know and have not seen any amendment to the bylaws. In fact, when I talked to the attorney that the old board had retained on the appeal, it appeared to me, this was a senior attorney, not the, uh, junior attorney who was at the meeting, it appeared to me that they were working from the same set of bylaws that, that the county had, had, had presented. If there are new bylaws, I'm not aware of them. If in fact, the old board, uh, does not object to the new board's leadership, I'm not sure what the controversy is here.
Mr. Link, have you consulted, have you had an official meeting with your board members, the members of your board over what you're presenting today? Has there been an official vote to authorize you to come before this board to present this to the Board of County Commissioners?
No, there has not because there has not been sufficient time to have a board meeting like as I said, we had, or, or, I'm, I'm still referring to it as a committee, a committee meeting because, uh, we have one scheduled for tomorrow evening at six thirty, six thirty P M. And, and. This is my stance on it right now.
This is your personal stance?
This is, this is my personal stance on it right now and if there is an issue, then they, we can get that resolved tomorrow night, but we have to have time to do that and regardless, I mean, you know, uh, uh, not.
Do the members of the board, the members of your board know that you're here this morning presenting this to the, to us? Do they all, are they all acknowledgement, they, aware that you're doing this, this morning on behalf of the corporation?
They, they do not, I mean, you know.
Is there anybody else here that wants to speak to this issue?
Yeah, come on up.
Mr. Jacobs?
My name's Larry Wilson. Bethel Community. Which, Mr. Young, y'all coming to the meeting? We had a very positive meeting. I'm not just trying to correct anything. We had eighty members sign to come to that meeting, but it was well over a hundred, the building was really surprising to me that we had that many in the community to come together on a quick notice. And the fundraisings and stuff, the, the lawyer kinda spooked some of us. We, we, is this a lawsuit or you taking over? It's no hostile takeover here, that's what I've been trying to get through the whole time. With the old board and new board, we just sit in a situation where it do comes that we need to take over the community, we, not they, not I, not me, none of that, we all together. And we here, only thing I understand is dollars and cents, my insurance run up, and we need first response. We have had a very positive meeting Saturday to financial, we did not bring it up. We did not go there pointing fingers, what you done, what we gonna do and all that. Actually, we don't know what to do right now, we know we need to get the fire department back up running, we need to support the community, we've had no, uh, fundraisers, uh, which they, I'm trying to use the word, take up donations for about four years. Community don't know what to do.
Well, that, that may put us in that crowd too, 'cause we don't exactly know what to do.
That's what we trying to, may I say, we are coming together kinda on a short notice, but with the old numbers, board members, may I speak on your part? We had a positive meeting. We did not go there with pointing fingers, we're not coming in here pointing fingers now and I do not, I do not think we need to go in on a hostile takeover, if I may use it. We need to support the old members to help this thing transition over smoothly. 'Cause you're going into a new business, you don't know what's that. We don't know what kinda quips that, we don't know what kinda loans that, the money, far as I'm concerned, I ain't worried about the money, 'cause I'm pretty sure money can slip away with a slip pen, with a pen and we're not gonna get any finger pointing on that now.
Alright, well, you know, as five people sitting up here trying to make decisions, there is no, the way I see it right now, there is no structured organization for us to send any funds to.
We have no one to contract to.
That's what we need to hear today.
So I don't foresee us writing any checks until something is put in place that is of some kind of organized.
I don't think, I may speak.
Hold on just a minute.
Our still running calls, we have not missed any calls as a, a fire department, fire department, we're still going out.
Yeah, but by your own bylaws, you don't have enough members to stay in business.
Okay.
By the state, by the state requirement, you don't have enough people to stay in business.
We have enough to stay in business under one fire department. We don't have enough for the two, that's what the problem coming in, there's the Woodstale and then Shiloh, that's why it's the problem, we didn't have the nineteen members to run the two, but we have enough to, already in place, running the one department, the Woodstale Fire Department and we are, as I stated, working with.
Well, has nothing been presented that shows us that we know that?
No one has said anything to us, uh.
And if y'all will no longer operate there?
Y'all said, as Mr. Wilson said, y'all just bypassed us and, and, and received things with no notification or anything, but we just want to. Our whole process is to, to supply the community with.
We've been in communication for quite a while.
And what we are wanting to do is to help them because that's what we have been in trying to do as a fire department, get the community to come out and get involved. If, if, we want to give them the, the fourteen active firefighters we have plus the ones that, that they are going to have when they come in, so there will not be any problem with the nine S status and what we're trying to do is to get about twenty-five fire departments, but if they take over now, they don't have any certified firefighters, they don't have anybody that know how to operate the fire trucks, they don't have anybody know who, and we don't wanna, I would hate to do that to anybody. I wouldn't do that to them, we're saying.
Alright, hold on just a minute. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I think that there are, there are two issues playing here, at least two issues, perhaps more. One is the governance of the corporation, that's the only thing your staff, this attorney has presented to you, who governs the corporation? The corporation continues in existence no matter who governs it, it's like this board of county commissioners, a new board comes into play, but the county has continuous existence, the corporation has continuous existence. The only, an issue here is who is a proper governing authority of the corporation? It appears to me from the facts that have been given to me that the meeting held in October of the community, I heard eighty, uh, the president said, perhaps over a hundred of people in the community who were members of the, of the, the community and members of the corporation because they owned property or lived in the district, came together and said, "We want a new board of directors." They used proper procedure, elected a new board of directors. That is, there was some statement that perhaps we didn't, the county didn't have anyone to deal with, I believe that is not correct, that we in fact, the county does have someone to deal with, the governing authority of the corporation, which is in our terms, the new board. That is not a statement about this, I think, what I heard, they were very careful throughout this whole process not to throw bricks at the old board, it was just to move forward with the neighborhood. I heard the, today, I heard a member of the old board say they had no intention of objecting to the new board having the governance authority, they wanted to work together. That being the case, um, if this board, it adopts the resolution before you, I would not believe that you're upsetting any relationships that might be between members of the community and the old board or the new board. Instead, you're saying, "We recognize the governing authority, we're willing to work with you to come up with a solution to provide emergency services to the people and continue the fire insurance, uh, rating." I, I don't think there has been animosity between anyone, I hear it this morning, but I had not heard it before then, if you adopt this resolution, I think that, that old board can continue to give information, old board members can give information, work with the new board, the volunteer firefighters are volunteer firefighters and EMS people for the corporation, the corporation governed by a new board now.
So we have a.
I don't know why that would, would change, just because the governance has changed.
We have a list of the new board, who is, who is the old board that the new board is now working in tandem with? So, Mr. Womack?
All of the old board knows.
Can I cut you a listing please? Could you give me the name?
Frank Womack, James Wilson, Greg Freeman, and, girl, I think.
Does Mr. Freeman live in this county? I just wanted to put a record, so given.
He doesn't live in this county, but Mr. Freeman has been a, a internal part of the Woodstale Fire Department, as a matter of fact, all of the fire trucks and fire equipment, Mr. Freeman has assisted, if not went out and got for the department.
Given, given the.
He want, he's just here to help, help the county, that's all.
Given, uh, what we've heard this morning, we really don't know who we're contracting with or what we're doing, I make a motion to table, 'cause I can't vote for a resolution that allows us to give funds even if by invoice and we know that they're working with the old board, including members that do not live in this county. These are first county tax dollars.
Can I add one more statement? I know sometimes it's hard to make things clear, the biggest thing I wanna let you know, we're not coming in here and amnesty, the new board got together and the community to let the county commissioners know that we're serious about keeping this fire department, we're gonna do it at all costs, the money, we, we would, yes, but I think if you get this new board in, and, well, not the new board, get this fire department back going, I think the people, the, of the community will be glad to help out with donations and get our dues back in progress to show the county commissioner, we're, we're not playing, we want this fire department back, we want your funding, but we wanna help fund it too.
And I hear what you're saying, Mr. Wilson, and I, I agree, but they're gonna have to do that on the money that was funded last year, which was in excess of seventy thousand dollars and I cannot, in good conscience, uh, being voted by the members of this county, to give this fire department any more money until we figure out what's going on down there and I don't know how much of that in excess of seventy thousand, I heard today that, that they only have enough members to run one department and they were giving that extra funds because they had two and if they're only gonna run, run, run one, then they should only get that forty, a little over forty thousand dollars that the other departments in this county get, they only have one department. And so until we understand what's going on, I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to table this resolution.
Alright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anya pooh? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would also suggest that, um, we continue to give assistance and guidance through our staff and county attorney, uh, during the transition of the, of this phase, at least we can do it at this point.
Mr. Chairman, on, on the, the suggestion, uh, the commissioner of the county attorney continuing to give assistance, I want, I wanna make one thing clear, I do not represent and have never represented, uh, corporation, I represent this county and my efforts, if you authorize me to provide assistance, will be to make sure that interests of this board are carried out and it's, it has been suggested that I represent and expect some fee from the corporation, that, I've never even heard of that kinda thing, that is not the case. My interest is whatever this county needs me to do to make sure that the citizens in that area of the county receive the services that this board of commissioners want to have.
Which at this point, I don't know what that is, so I wouldn't, I don't know why they would be contacting Ron, um, until they have a governing board and a.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we instruct our attorney to get with the state fire marshal people and with our only EMS people and find out exactly what they're gonna require, what the procedure's gonna be and exactly how we need to proceed. Uh, we're dealing with a lot of, lack of better word, ignorance this morning because we don't really know the details nor the law and I think it's imperative that we contact the people that are gonna pu, uh, call the shots and find out what the hell we gotta do. All right, you'll come back at the next meeting with a game plan, from the state, we'll at least know how with, how everybody needs to proceed, not just us, but the volunteer fire department also, because the, the state people are the ones that are gonna dictate what, what happens here. Um, y'all can do everything you wanna do, but if you don't satisfy them, you still gonna be out of business. Okay, so, I think we need to know for, as a board, what we aiming towards, 'cause right now, we just going in shotgun approach and don't know exactly what, which way to go. We need to be told what needs to happen, how it needs to happen, and when it needs to happen, and so, the better, the sooner everybody knows that, better off everybody's gonna be. All right? Any, anything else we need to speak on that matter at this moment? If not, we'll proceed with the agenda. Uh, chairman's report, I don't have anything this morning, uh, Hady, you got anything?
No, sir.
Any commissioners got anything they want to speak about?
Uh, one thing, Mr. Chairman, it was brought to my attention that the, uh, contingent of Wake County Commissioners wants to meet with this board.
Uh-huh.
Um, to my knowledge, it's only two commissioners from that board that wants to meet, and, um, I would, I... It's three? I would request, instead of holding an official county commissioner meeting, just to have our chair and vice chair meet with them individually, instead of, uh, holding an official, uh, commissioner meeting.
That'd be fine, me, is that all right, G.R., okay?
Chair and vice chair only?
Yes, chair and vice chair only.
Sure.
Okay, anything else need to be discussed this morning?
What's your turn?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.